Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at either 9:59 or 6:01. So we're gonna take the 6:01. I would ask us, before we begin our meeting, to all stand, face the flag, and if you so impolite, please stand here. Head where off and follow along with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you have your agendas in front of you. Does anyone have any additions, subtractions? I would like to add item H, and we'll just call it public forum discussion. No one else has anything? I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda shown.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters, we have none, so...
Bob, before we go any farther, because Mr. Hodges has conferences as well, you'd like to introduce our new junior rep, if you don't mind, before we start the meeting.
Absolutely. Actually, Ashley Sarris.
Yes, since none of you have seen me. Okay, this is our junior representative, Matt Brewer.
Why don't you remind everyone who you are?
Oh, and yes, yes, and I am Ashley Sarris, since I've not been here.
Old business, consideration to approve the second reading of the 519 interviews of students by outside agencies and 520 student surveys inform 520 public notice.
Right, and you'll remember, the reason why these are second readings is Mr. Hodges actually needed these to have a first reading already done. That's why they're different than the other first readings for tonight. So you've already seen this one. If you've had any questions on it, we've answered those. So we're just looking at the second reading of those policies tonight.
Second reading, and we have, it's not a discussion item, but we don't have a mine item here as well.
That is correct. You're just consideration to approve. You could wait ahead and move, and to approve those if you would like to.
Okay.
Any reason why we wouldn't?
Any reason why we wouldn't?
I'll make a motion to accept.
So you're motioning to change this item A to a whole business to a action item?
Yep.
And you're also voting yes to approve these. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pat. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Under new business, discussion, review of the pilot soccer program. 1415 is year two of a two-year trial commitment. I think initially we'll turn this over to Jake.
Sure. Well, like you said, year two, two years ago, we came here and we said, let's give it a try for two years, or the school will pay for part of the costs, and the parent group and the athletes will pay for the rest. It's gone really well. The numbers increased from year one to year two. We competed at three levels on the boys' team and the girls' side. We're just short of having two teams, so most of the year we actually just played with one team. We had a couple JV games, mostly just a varsity team. Like I said, things went well, the coaches did a great job, students love it. We're competing in the HBL. Our schedule is ready for next year if we choose to pick it up. I sat down with Josh Davison and kind of put together some numbers. The new expenses, if you guys choose to take this on as the school, would be a coaching salary. We figured one for each level. So if we're looking at three levels on the boys' side, like we had this year, you know, you're looking at about $9,500. On the girls' side, if you just look at two teams, maybe about seven grand for a coach's salaries. Aside from that, you know, right now we're paying for transportation, we're paying for officials, which is a good chunk of what this costs. The rest of it would be a supply budget like we give every other sport, and then like a fee budget for tournament entry fees and stuff like that, worker fees. As far as revenues, the only revenues really that you'll get will be registration fees. You can charge admission, about, seems about half the schools in the HBL charge admission, half don't. The thing is, if you charge admission, you would want to have a site manager, and you obviously have to pay a ticket taker as well, too. One thing, either way, I would like to see us pay a scorekeeper, because right now we're not paying a scorekeeper, and the officials would like to see us have an official scorekeeper as well. So I don't know if you want numbers of what Josh and I came up with right now or not, or if you have any questions, I can throw you in.
Do we need a trainer, two athletic trainers?
Yes, right now the athletic trainer is, covers soccer over, like volleyball or tennis, something like that. So football and soccer are kind of the top two that she covers. So she has been going to soccer now.
Moving forward, if we decide that we keep soccer, is there been any conversation with where it's being held currently?
Yeah.
And is there any, they want to let us still play there, not play there?
You know, our elementary school right now, our girls played their season out at the elementary school. It seemed to work out pretty well. There's, you know, we had to move a potty-potty down there, and we'd have to get electricity if we ever did a scoreboard or something like that. But there's lots of space down there, there's no seating for bleachers. The field at St. Paul's has been great. There's a light pole that's pretty close to the field that I heard some complaints about. I haven't talked to them as far as whether they let us continue beyond, you know, this two-year period. But we do have space at the elementary school. Actually, the soccer coaches at the HBL meeting actually proposed that all games be played in a stadium setting, under the lights, which would mean for us, we'd have to be downtown, otherwise behind the field, behind the high school here, but we don't have lights. So the soccer coaches would like that. That was voted down, so the soccer teams can continue playing where they're playing, so. We have space. Currently, there's two soccer fields at the elementary school, and kind of a practice field, and then one where the girls varsity plays.
So do the girls' practice currently down at the elementary school?
Yep.
And then the boys' practice up at St. Paul's?
Correct, yep.
We always were, I guess, had some moderate concerns about numbers of participants, and we were gonna reach out to Randolph or other, and other places. Has that happened?
Yes, we are co-op with Randolph currently. Goodhue would like to, they got into the game kind of too late this year. They were interested in getting in this year, but looking at next year, co-oping with Goodhue as well, to see if we can get a couple athletes coming from there. Both boys and girls, like I said, the numbers grew. The boys' numbers were really good, and the girls were close to having two teams, so.
So if we would co-op with both Randolph and Goodhue, that would affect cannonballs, other sports?
No, it'd be for soccer only, and there's only two classes in soccer.
Okay.
So it's kind of the small schools. And even with adding those two enrollments, it would put us in AA.
Yeah, it wouldn't move us to a different class for all the other sports?
No, it'd be the same.
If I personally had a concern about anything, it would probably be that we're gonna take a fairly huge hit over the next couple of years with our declining enrollment. We have a bubble class, we lose that, we lose that big class, we lose quarter of a million dollars. And with that goes, you know, possible programming, possible cutbacks. How do we justify continuing the soccer program if we may end up cutting some programs?
That's a tough question that you're gonna have to answer. You know, people will say that the more kids that you can get active in sports, you know, more successful they're gonna be. And, you know, our fall registrations are up, not just because of soccer, but in the last two years, registrations are up over 60 students. So there's 60 kids who weren't doing something before, in the fall, in the last two years since we added soccer. Not all just because soccer, but registrations are actually up in those two years.
I think that's what I noticed most about soccer, more than anything, is athletes that did not do an activity. You know, I know Tim and Jake and I were very concerned, was it gonna pull from tennis or football or any of that? That didn't occur. What did occur is athletes that just weren't active in the fall are now active. So that's, you know, where you see those numbers go up. So it was really interesting to see kids that maybe were interested in fall or in winter and spring, but not doing anything in the fall, and now they're three-season athletes or doing something in the fall. It was really eye-opening to, I think, all of us.
What are we looking at for numbers, Jake? Just in general, can you shoot some numbers?
Money?
No, just for participants?
Oh, you know, I think the boys had...
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, I think, and the girls, I think, were at twenty-two, yeah. And, you know, the thing that you gotta remember there is, like, these senior girls or these girls that have been playing, they hadn't played since elementary school. So it's kind of almost amazing that they came out as juniors and seniors to play soccer, because they hadn't played in five seconds.
Do you have any title concerns with numbers?
No, I don't. I actually ran the numbers today, and it's supposed to be proportionate with what your school population is. The numbers I got is that the school's 52% male and 52% of our participants are male. So it's right on.
How would you go off addressing the playing fields in the future? If we're talking down at the John Birch, does everyone vote, do we? Does everyone vote and approve, or is it a majority, or how does that work?
Say, vote for downtown.
Playing down, if you have to play under the lights?
Oh, yeah, that was, so each fall, the coaches get together, have a meeting, each sport does that. And the, those coaches made their recommendation from there, goes to the activities directors. We voted it down, but there's actually another step after that, that would have to be approved as well.
There's a lot of schools that don't have light.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
So if we don't play there, how would we set up for future? For, let's say we can't increase this to having three levels on each side, two levels on girls and three on boys, we're gonna have the room for them to play?
Yeah, you know, even if we just use the elementary school, the JV and the junior high could play at the same time, and then the varsity play afterwards. So we got those two fields down there, one can be for the JV, and then the junior high can be right next door, and then the varsity can start afterwards. So even with the two fields we have on campus, we'd be fine.
Mr. Hodges, you got any input on this at all?
My input is that the more kids we can have participate in any kind of activity, whether it's soccer or... Speech, or whatever, it's all better. Kids who are active and are a part of the school community are better students and more well-rounded. And we've got tons and tons and tons of research that shows that. I know that budget is always a concern, but, you know, I kind of said this two years ago when we went down this trial road, is I really hope this is something that if you, that you do for two years and we see some success with the program, that we continue it, and that would be my recommendation.
Tonight, are we looking at Curtis coming here, or is this just...
I think we're discussing, because it was kind of on a two-year trial, as to, I think, how we felt. I'm not sure we were gonna vote on it, but we thought we could end up voting on it. You know, it hasn't been the topic of discussion for us at all, and I think that's a good thing, because it indicates everything's been going very well in the program. And so, for those of you who may have heard, there was issues there, there have been none. You know, we just, we just have other concerns on the day-to-day operation sometimes, and we know that two years is up. But, you know, any anecdotal conversation has been extremely positive, so.
Pat?
No, I'm, you know, I supported it right off the bat, and I still support it. I think, you know, I'm with, I'm in agreement, you know, we get a lot of kids sitting around in the fall that aren't, you know, that aren't going out for some of the other sports, and if, especially, I'm really encouraged by the fact that the numbers in the other groups didn't decline, this rose. That's very encouraging, as far as I'm concerned, because it's giving another outlet to, you know, kids who don't, you know, wanna do maybe the football or volleyball or whatever in the fall, you know? I think it's a good thing. It's just, you know, it's finances. It's always comes down to finances, but...
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, too, I supported the idea from the beginning, and I would want to continue supporting it, because I think it's a great sport, and getting more kids involved is really good.
Would it be fair to let these people know that we are fully supportive of it? We just need to work out numbers, and we need to know how we're gonna pay for this if we make that transition. I don't know if we talked about adding another year, or if you would ever recommend that, but it probably is more money out of pocket for parents, but we wanna, we wanna continue to see this grow. It's just that okaying it at this time, you know, we need to prioritize things, and I would like to give these folks just a vote of confidence that we are in support of it, we just have to find out what we're doing here. So, would that be fair?
Yeah. Do we have the costs or the exact costs that we need, we would need to expect?
You have, you have paid for the transportation, and that was $3,700 total, and that would be again for next year. You've also paid for the officials, which Josh, or Jake, help me out, is about $4,000. That's what it's cost you to run this now. If you added the coaches, though, for the five, and that would be three for boys and two for girls...
Yep.
It would roughly be $16,000, so you're looking at adding $16,000. They would go into a uniform rotation, all that will come later.
They'd have to apply a budget, too, but, you know...
But we're very appreciative of the nets and the major equipment that this group and organization has put together, because without that, we couldn't have done the upfront costs. But you're looking at about a $16,000 cost to add soccer.
Yeah, on the surface of things, it doesn't seem like a lot when your total budget is in excess of 10 million, but we will be making $16,000 cuts here very soon. So as a board, we're very supportive of the program, both boys and girls programs. We haven't given it a lot of conversation, but please understand, we want this to go forward as much as you do. Well, maybe not as much as you do, but we do.
Do we have a timeframe that we're under here at all? Need to make a decision by date?
Well, like I said, the schedule, the conference schedule's set. I feel kind of bad about pulling our team out from under everybody, you know, too close to the season, but non-conference schedule, I haven't done anything with a non-conference schedule. I've had at least two teams reach out to me about wanting to get a game, and I just kind of told them to hold on until I know what's going on for sure, so.
How many kids are we bringing in from Randolph?
I, I think there's only one who showed interest on the girls' side, you know, so...
Is that be something that I think needs to be talked about probably amongst super athletics in that area? If the program, if we, if we're going to get more kids from Randolph, can they afford to have $60,000?
Well, they would pay the activity fee. That's what the co-op does. We do the same thing with, when we co-op with Northfield for Alpine skiing, they pay their fee to ask them to pay more. I mean, they're bringing their child over here. I don't think we've recruited very hard in this, and we certainly could do that. I think we were kind of holding off, because when I talked to the Goodhue superintendent, he asked me, I don't want to give them false hope that we're, you know, I think we need to wait to see what the board does. Then Jake goes to the ADs, I go to the superintendents, and that's when you're really gonna start seeing numbers. Would you agree?
Yeah, for sure. Some schools do when they co-op, like, say, say we have 20 kids, and there's one of them's coming from Randolph, the business officer with Bill Randolph, one-twentieth of the cost of the soccer program.
Right.
So some schools do that. That came up a few years ago, I think before I was actually AD, and you guys chose to just continue with their, just the registration fee.
So when, I'm sorry, when we give a vote of confidence, I'm gonna go back to what Rob's asking, though, do we need a deadline on this thing? You guys deserve an answer, too, as to where we're gonna go with this. I mean, when we're gonna bring it up again, would it be spring, or we just call the ball and make a vote? I guess that's my question, is, you know, we can...
I don't think you can wait till spring.
Yeah, I'd rather know before spring.
Yeah. You would need to know sooner than later.
When would you like to know by? Well, you asked you for something.
End of November.
December meeting?
Yeah, we only have one in December, so...
Is that, is that gonna do anything between now and November? Are we gonna be looking at budget that closely where it's not even gonna matter?
Admin will be giving you January, first January board meeting will be giving you budget stuff.
I say we go on, go for a vote now. Unless we want to delay it any further, I don't know what the purpose might be.
So this is, remind me, though, this was, this was, you guys have been funding this, right? The whole way? Okay. Because, I mean, if, it just as where the numbers sit right now, 48 and 22 is 70 kids, $16,000 added, it's 225 bucks a kid. I mean, that's really what it boils down to, is what it would cost, if you wanna sit, just do the simple math.
Well, that's just the coaches, though, Pat. We...
No, we've, 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 we just got done saying that we've already paid, we've already paid the $4,000 and the $3,700. So if you look at the coach's salary now, that's adding $16,000. That's what it would add above and beyond what we've already paid. So if you take the $16,000 and you divide it by the 70 kids we already have, it's two and a quarter a piece. I'm not saying that that's, I'm not, I'm just saying that when you boil it down, when you boil it down to that... Because we're already paying the other two, right? We already, we already paid them. Or we have been paying them. So it's an added 16. Correct?
New money, yeah.
New money.
New money. The program costs 20.
Right.
Doesn't quite work out that way for me mathematically, because I think...
It doesn't either.
I think these parents would absorb costs, but they wouldn't spend the money that a district would spend to promote the sport.
Yeah.
I'm thinking there's a lot of volunteer help behind that in addition to, but be that as it may. Jake would have some issues with continuing to hear from other schools and us putting them on hold. Now, we can either tell Jake to continue to schedule games, and we'll deal with it at the next meeting, or if you're so inclined to approve it this evening, we would have to have a motion to make this discussion item a action item, and then vote on it.
I'll make a motion.
You are making a motion to make this an action item for a meeting. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Rob. Everyone approving this as an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. So that would make the next statement is if we want to absorb the soccer program into our list of activities governed by the state high school league and pay the associated costs with the program. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, I would listen to a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Brenda. Further discussion?
Are they currently paying activity fees now to play soccer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's already an income that's been coming into the district to help offset the cost for transportation.
Yep.
Okay.
But when we go, if this comes on as part of the district, Title IX, all activity fees are the same across the board, doesn't matter?
Well, no, some schools have, like Northland, for example, because we co-op for Alpine skiing, that's, that's like 225 bucks, and they have probably about three or four different fees, depending on what sport it is.
Gotcha.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the soccer program for permanency, for lack of a better term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You clap, but you're in your infancy as a sport.
They knew that wasn't the sport.
We're gonna need your help, I think.
It was the baller water.
Item B, discussion for an outdoor facilities usage. I requested this to be on, only because we've gone a long time, and me especially have gone a long time driving into the school and seeing the green space in front of us on the south side be for the most part unused. In the old days, all we had was boys' sports and boys' facilities, I'm sorry to say, but with the advent of more and more activities, we find ourselves, I think, very short of space and practice space, and really game space, if we can afford to put that in. So I think it's long past overdue to at least have the discussion on whether that space is best served as it is, or expanding our usage a little bit. I understand Fayette is a part of, a part of that, but anybody who's walked those fields from the time your kids were six years old and eight years old knows that it's not level. And I think it behooves us to at least look at that. I asked both Jake and Dave Peterson, our facilities man, whether we could even fit a field on that, because we're not just concerned about 100 yards or whatever it happens to be. We need 15 or 20 yards on either side of that, places for people to stand on the north and south end. We need conversation, I'm guessing with the DLT about where we can put a field and whether we can kick soccer balls out on 19 or not. So it does present a dynamic, but even, even in its most elementary form, just to have a practice field we can count on would be wonderful. So, Dave, I reached out to you, I think, first on it, to see logistically if we could do it.
From the information that I've gathered, calling the Minnesota sanctioning league on athletics, there is no stipulation on how close you are to the road. Obviously, they don't want you too close. I mean, but there is no law that says that you can't put it close to a road. There's other facilities that do have them close to roads. We do have enough space up front. We're looking at about 345 feet by 345 feet. It would be enough for one field, either practice football, soccer, combination of both, with room for standing room or temporary bleachers on either side. So the space is available. I mean, it's big enough. Grading, that kind of stuff is gonna be rather expensive, of course, to be able to level the surface off, so it's a functional practice or playing field. So, you know, something that we can look into further, but it definitely is gonna have an expense tied to it. And once you have a playing field, I think you're probably gonna think about irrigation, and not much grows when you play on it unless you have water. So these are all things that I, you know, I briefly looked into. I don't have any solid numbers, but, you know, there's gonna be a significant expense to being able to make that happen. I don't know how much detail you want me to get into.
Everything but money right now. Jake, facilities, are we grossly short, somewhat short?
We're very, very lucky that we have the city and churches and the support we have in the community to play, you know, varsity football, JV football plays downtown, baseball plays downtown, junior high baseball plays on the city field, junior high softball plays on the city field. You know, right now, right now, when there's a junior high football game, our varsity football team's practicing on a 50-yard field, you know, trying to get ready for a Friday night football game. If it ever comes to the time where soccer needs to play in the stadium, you know, like they wanna do right now, whether it's under the lights or not, there's no place to put these football teams. So we happen, we need space.
Do you find that that space is our most viable solution, or do you have other areas?
Well, there's that. If we could get Frank Cox Field, the outfield there, I don't think we could have fit a football field in Frank Cox Field, but they could at least use it for practice if we had to. Otherwise, the space behind the elementary school, if we can get that, I mean, we're using it currently, but if we could really get that looking good, maybe play, practice and play soccer games down there. You know, we're using about every inch of space we can. There's one empty corner, but it's up on a hill, so I don't think you can use that for anything else.
Many, many years ago, the facility back there was just, just as hard as concrete. Has that changed at all? Is that still rough?
That's, yeah.
It's hard, it's hard.
Dave, what would you say to adding another field to your plate as a facilities guy?
I don't know. Obviously, we'd have to look at the expenses. We have a tough time just being able to keep up with the fields that we're doing right now, but that is because we're going all over the place. I mean, we're going downtown, I mean, we're prepping fields kind of all over, and we'd have to look at what was being played there, how often we were playing there, you know, if it was irrigated or not. That determines on how much we've gotta paint the fields, the expense of painting the fields, and just the bodies and the help to do it. It would be a challenge. I'm not gonna say it wouldn't be. It'd be a challenge.
But again, bringing it up here might save logistics just a little bit of time.
Definitely closer is better. There's no doubt about it. I mean, we're not putting the equipment on trailers, we're not driving it down there, so on the campus, for me and for my, my team, is better.
Would that money be better spent behind the school and making that, you know, field that we have back there, making that more playable, and is that a better way to spend our money than redoing a field up front? Or doesn't that help you with the C squad and all those type of things that you're dealing with?
Well, we're certainly getting by the way it is right now, so I don't, we can continue to do that. That field back there gets a lot of use between football practice and Fayette and everything else that goes on during high games, so...
Expense-wise, to be able to make those improvements in back, it'd be a lot easier to do, being it was already piped at one time for irrigation, things like that. If you have irrigation, you're gonna be able to get twice the play as you would out of somewhere that didn't have it, especially if you don't have rain for an extended amount of time and, you know, I guess weather isn't predictable around here. So it could raise some serious problems. We can't paint on dirt, you know, and that's kind of the problem that we're running into behind the elementary right now is if we don't get water, that field gets beat down pretty good and we have trouble striping that field. So I completely agree that if we were gonna spend the money to be able to put that investment into the field that already has a grandstand, already has a press box, already has electric out there, already has a scoreboard.
The concession stand.
Concession stand.
All those things that you can, you gotta look at a revenue source, too. You've got all those things that can be back there as well.
I absolutely agree with that. I think it'd be much wiser to spend the money in that direction and try and make that more of a multi-use area.
We're talking about the area inside the track.
Inside the track. We do have, you know, a small organization that's looking at trying to get that going. I mean, we're not gonna, we may not have access to the city forever. You know, we've gotta have a plan if that was to ever change or, you know, to have things on campus. We need to make sure we have lights so that if, you know, there was requirements for stadium, we've got the lights ready to go for back there. There's, it just seems like that's a better bang for the buck. And when I met with the city engineer and we talked about a few things, too, he was surprised at the elevation of the front field and what the cost would take to bring that up, so I'm agreeing with you. He was surprised we didn't put more money into the backfield and make that more of a usable field. And I watched a lot of soccer games this year. I thought the fields, I mean, although hard, I thought they were really nice. I mean, they were better than some of the away games we went to.
No, and we had a pretty good year this year. I mean, I'm just thinking of the future, you never know what it's gonna, you know, bring, but we kinda got lucky this year and the field's held out pretty darn good. I'll agree with that.
They could probably use a little bug control. They were a little, or a little buggy. A lot of mosquitoes.
You know, during the referendum a few years ago when we built the field house and auditorium, there was a lot of discussion about going the whole nine, the extra nine yards, as it were, for the analogy there. But going a little further and doing the lights and all that, you know, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, John Birch Park, which is, to me, one of the most beautiful parks in the state, if not the country, is a baseball park. It's not a football field. And so you kinda, what you kinda got there is almost a reverse of the Metrodome where you had a football field where the Twins had, they had to reconfigure it to, for the Twins to play baseball, it was a terrible place to watch a baseball game. But, you know, there was a lot of, you know, traditionalists that have been around a long time that have watched football down there for fifty years, and they just didn't wanna see that tradition broke from, you know, down there to up here. But I always kinda thought that it was, it had to be an eventual move, because football's one of those sports where, you know, you really gotta bus, you gotta take about three busloads of stuff down there, you know, to get a football game going where the kids could just come out of the locker room and just go straight to the fields, you know, and the band and everything, and you got savings there as well, you know, if you're not busing everybody down there. So I, you know, I'd like to see that happen down the road sometime. I really would.
I think concessions is also a big part of that, too.
Concessions is.
Having it right here on site. We got a beautiful concession stand that.
That's up to code and.
Yep. Yeah.
Anybody else have any input on this?
I brought it up.
The only I'm looking at is if there's any cost savings as far as maintenance of the grass, and I've thought about this for years, we mow everything that we've got. Is there a way to put it into a natural prairie, something that when we go over contracts, we don't mow forty acres, we're only mowing thirty or twenty-five, and we're able to save some money there, which would help in other areas?
I feel like we use every square inch of this campus. I don't know what we could not.
We're already short square footage right now, even with practice areas, even if we do use that, it's like we still, I mean.
We mow the ditches, we mow around the school. Is there a way that we can reduce that, reduce our cost for the mower? So we're not mowing.
More bugs, though.
We could buy some goats. Yeah, we could harvest them.
Anything's possible, you know, you'd have to look at, basically, it's, you know, they measure it up and whatever we can have them not mow is what we would save. We'd have to determine if that was worth it for us, to be honest with you.
Put it into something that's gonna be attractive as well, not just let it go to weed.
Yeah, mhm. It is a possibility.
When our young kids practice seventh and eighth grade, where do they practice?
Elementary school. Football, soccer, go to the elementary school.
And when do they practice?
At three o'clock. They're able to share a field and so they're able to do it at three.
What are they doing out in front of the high school now, the events that are taking place out there?
In front.
Yeah.
Nothing after school. There shouldn't be anything after school here.
Just cross-country media.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Yeah.
During school, use that as a P.
Yeah, Fayette goes out.
Fayette.
We use it for flag football, too. Like your community ed stuff has used it before.
Most of the time behind the elementary.
Maybe we can get some of that money out of the community, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we beat him up a lot. What is the cost of that?
Of what specifically?
Of that south side, if we refurbish that? The big green space?
Just the leveling of it and getting the leveling, you know, you're at least fifteen, twenty thousand. You know, then you gotta irrigate, you're in for another fifteen, twenty thousand. And then, of course, with natural grass, you got your regular maintenance and the cost of the watering and the fertilizing and the seeding and the aerating and the cost of staff to be able to maintain it and the equipment. Tough to put specific numbers on that.
You know, we looked at lights in the back there a number of years ago, and I think did a hundred and twenty K probably out there?
It's gonna be more than that now.
This was a discussion item, so we don't have an outcome here necessarily. Does anybody wanna chip in anymore?
Please don't spend any.
Nothing approved?
Please, no approvals on this item.
Okay, well, so much for Bob's idea today.
No, I think it's good discussion, though. I don't think it hurts to talk about it.
No, absolutely. I mean, I think it's something that we have to talk about, because we are pressed for space, and, I mean, we really are kinda scrambling all over. And like you said, for us to be able to do any preparing of fields on-site is definitely beneficial to my team. The closer we are to home to be able to get these fields ready, I mean, we don't have an outdoors crew, you know? Our custodians prep these fields. So, you know, the closer we are to home, I think it's definitely worth discussing.
Yeah, but we really need to have somebody step forward and say, you know, I'll take a part of this, I'll pay for a part of this.
That would be perfect.
If we had a McNeelius, didn't they just put in a million for that artificial turf and triton?
Six hundred and forty thousand. Not that I know the exact number.
Do they get naming rights?
Do they get naming rights?
They get naming rights.
Okay. Good discussion, no outcome. Let's move down to item C, consideration to approve the fourteen-sixteen custodial contract.
Now, I know you feel like you've seen this on the agenda several times, and you have, that we were working up final details. The contract is attached. There was kind of a glitch with the actual union rep in her vacation and when it was lining up and the voting of sorts, but there's nothing in the contract that is dramatically changed. We just wanna get this approved as soon as we can, so Dave can actually hire people and know what the contract is gonna be.
Yes.
No surprises in there at all. It's just taken a while to do it.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
Do we know what did change? Do we know if you can see the differences? Is that insignificant, or?
There were, I can't tell you exactly. The language changes were the medical that we've given all the other groups. With the new healthcare law, you have to offer insurance. Very few of them will take that just because of the salary they make and, you know, but we had to offer that.
Basically, the language of it.
Yep, the language needed to be in there. We also changed what you can take a sick day for. Again, legality, you can now take a sick day for your mother or father, even if you're over eighteen, if you wanna do that. But again, you've seen that in every single contract, what you can use a sick day for. Salary was the increase of three and three, and that's it. It was just those two language items and the salary was three and three. Those are the changes.
Okay, we've got a motion by Pat, seconded by Jerry. End of discussion. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item D, consideration to approve the first reading of the five-oh-one, five-oh-five policy.
Right, as you go down to E, you will see that the five-hundreds are not in there. Five-oh-five, we've actually already had to use. It's the one that's labeled distribution of materials, and because Tim needed that the other day and I also had to reference it, we'd like to go ahead and do our first reading of that. It was in your packet that came out.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? This is the first of two, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve the first reading of the policy series two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred, seven-hundred, eight-hundred, nine-hundred, as recommended by the policy committee.
You were sent these via email. It's hundreds and hundreds of pages. We certainly didn't wanna print those. Deb Kaderlich, I know you all know who she is, she's one of our third grade teachers, has been working since June on making sure that MSBA policies line up with Cannon Falls policies. It's really important that we've got those laid out. So these are the ones that are done. Five-hundreds and six-hundreds need a lot of administrative attention to make sure that we've got it the way we want it. That's why we pulled five-oh-five out separately, but we do look for a recommendation to approve the twos, the threes, the fours, the sevens, the eights, and the nines.
I'll make a motion.
Approve?
Motion by Jerry. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Pat. Other discussion?
Deb Kaderlich is standing right over there hiding, and she just wanna, I want.
I have D notes, so I can put down first reading on five-oh-five.
Wanna make sure, Beth gave you a shout-out, I wanna make sure everybody knows you're here and thank you very much for your work.
How does that work, too? She's doing, Deb's doing it, so then after she's gone through these and reviewed them and established them with the Minnesota high school policies or statutes, they're all looked at by everybody?
Absolutely. And these all went.
She's not held liable or anything like that?
No, gosh, no. This has already gone through policy, it's already gone through admin. This comes to you after a lot of review, tons of review.
Right now, are we, is this motion to approve the first reading?
Just the first reading of them, yep.
Okay, and then, I know we added this as a separate item, but there was one of the policies which was about the order of the meeting.
Yep, and that's why we'll bring that up, and then we can do, when we do the second reading, we can make those changes. That's why we're adding it tonight.
Make changes then?
Yep. Good job, Brenda, you've read your policies. I'm very impressed.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the multi-listing agreement for the Wastito building.
I did send that to you. This is just, our real estate agent needs the listing. My name will be on there as the LEA. We've checked it over with legal, it's good to go. It's just like listing your home. I'd like to move forward, because right now, the showings, I have to go do them. I can't turn the keys over to him until he is officially, and you've approved the listing agreement.
I'll make a motion, approve?
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve a five-year bank rotation.
Well, we brought this, dropped this up at finance. Right now, we were currently doing a three-year rotation. We would really like to move to a five-year rotation. We're very short on staff in the district office, and every time you do a change of a bank, it doesn't sound like much, but it actually is a lot of work, and three years comes very, very quickly. So we recommended to the finance committee, they did approve that. We'd like to move to a five-year rotation. Just so you know, we do have a bank rep on the finance committee. He also agreed that that was just fine at the local banks.
I'll make a motion.
Kurt?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Item H, public forum. Now, it was always on my understanding, we always had public forum at the end of the evening. Does that take a monumental change to change its direction to a different part of the agenda?
That is the way I've always remembered it. I tried to look back as far as I could. It looks like it's always been at the end. You have a lot of history here. I will say, though, going through policies, one of them that Deb brought to our attention was the policy that lays out the order of your meeting. Then Brenda had questioned as well on other committees around, the public forum is earlier in the meeting. A nice example is you've got a lot of people here, you know, over a topic, and sometimes they get to make their comments at the end. So I just checked with the HVL only, and all of them, except us, have the public forum either at the beginning of the meeting, they have it very limited. Sometimes ours can get long-winded at the end, you know, maybe moving it up would kind of shorten it down. Most schools have a card you need to fill out so that the board chair can approve or not approve what you're going to talk on. The board chair can then also go through, maybe you get a stack of a hundred, and they don't want five hundred people to talk about soccer. He would select five people, maybe, to talk about a topic. It's just something I thought Brenda brought up. It actually came up in our policy, and that's why you referenced that. We do go against what MSBA recommends for public forum. I don't know when it started. For the fifteen years I've been here, it's always been at the end. There's good and bad to that. It kinda, it keeps you all here to see our meetings, which is always kinda nice, too. It is a good discussion item. We can certainly keep it, but it is. I think the community would like to maybe be heard prior to, you know, action items, but that would be up to the board.
Yeah, that's the reason I brought it up, because I, well, the Goodyear County Ed District Board does have a public forum earlier in the meeting, and then Beth checked with some of the other HVL schools, and they'll have it earlier in the meeting. And that way, we're able to hear comments from the public before we discuss and vote on things. And also, people don't have to sit and wait through all of our business to make a comment about something that we might have already just voted on. So I just thought it'd be worth bringing up for discussion. And that's one of the policies that we can, that we're voting on, the order of the meeting.
So you can change it for your second reading?
Anybody have any input on that?
Yeah, nine years on the school board, I got four meetings left, and I've always wondered why we wait till the end to talk about stuff like that. I really have. I've always, I've always wondered why that came at the end, but I didn't think that there was any way we could move it. I think it's a wonderful idea to move it forward, move it up, let people speak and then discuss it and vote, if you have a topic that people wanna discuss.
Might have more people coming, too.
You know, so many of the topics that we have are just as dry as the readings and the custodial contracts.
I don't say that, Deb's still here.
No, she'll affect it.
But it was dry for her as well, I'm sure. You know, I'm torn by, yeah, let's try something different, and it probably is good, but sometimes you get involved with an emotional argument, that it should be based more on finance or policy or something like that. And if people speak ahead of time and we think we've got a good idea about what's going on in general, and we let the emotions play into it, are we making the right decision then, based on possibly a community pressure when they may not know as much about a topic as we do? So that's always one for me. But I do have to admit, when people sit through a meeting and in the end, results that they wanted to hear don't happen for them, it's awfully difficult to hold back on the public forum at the end in a positive way. on the public forum at the end in a positive way. What the heck were you guys thinking of? So, I, let's, um, let's talk about moving this up in the agenda from now on. I don't know what the procedural thing, the policy thing is. Let's just talk about moving it up. As well, give it a shot.
I will rearrange your agenda for the next time. You don't need to make a motion. We will have to change the policy and how it's listed in the procedural. I'll take care of that as well.
Okay, moving on to reports. Board members, WeTech open house that I missed.
Yeah, I thought I went.
How did it go?
Good.
Good?
Yeah. Nice, nice, nice system. It works very, very well. We were in contact with Goodview and Plainview and Zambroda. They're all online with us, and we just got together, and we're sitting in the WeTech room just right across the hall here, and we just had a meeting. It went really neat, and it was really neat to see that, how that works. So, Rob, what do you think?
I, I thought it was very good. Gave us a little example of what the kids get. I didn't realize that they had been doing ITV since 1988, and there's 260 kids involved in the four districts already. We've got one. But I think it is a great alternative. Hopefully, we'll get more involved with the kids.
Well, Mr. Hutch didn't really sell it yet, because we didn't know the room would be done as of yet.
Right.
So, the one student was kind of a fluke, and he signed up for it, but you know, it, we haven't advertised it as of yet, so.
What was interesting is, we went into the room, and the TVs weren't on, but we were online.
We could hear everybody talking.
We could hear us talking. We were in there, and we didn't know what was going on. But, um...
I got a text from...
Yeah?
Yes. We didn't know how to turn everything on. It was just hit the buttons on the TV, and everything was already set up.
Yeah, Erin was doing that from...
Erin can adjust the cameras. It's, it's a pretty neat setup, with the big screens up there, both front and back, for instructors as well as the students. I don't know if there's another way to get people in there to actually see it, you know, when other, it would have to be with other schools doing it at the same time, otherwise, all you see are blank TVs up there, or TVs where you'll see empty rooms, but if you could literally, it's, you could hold a meeting amongst four school districts all at once, and everybody can see and talk to everybody.
Has anybody seen it here? Know what we're talking about?
Video conferencing.
Yeah, it is, for the schools. It's interactive live TV. And then they're talking about, they do the autopsy and the knee surgery.
Yeah.
One of the courses that they give where the knee surgery is actually interactive, so as they're doing the knee surgery, the students can ask questions to the doctors as they're doing it. Which, I'd like to...
Probably seen some of that...
There's kids that take Russian from a teacher in Russia. I mean, it's, it's neat.
That's true.
Is that door open right now by any chance? Is it something worth looking at on the way?
Probably not open right now, no.
Okay.
Anybody got a key? Nobody?
Okay, moving on, we have a board retreat on November 12th. We could probably get together twice, twice a year, and kind of discuss the direction of the board, or the direction of the district, I guess. And that'll be happening shortly, so make sure it's on your calendars, board members. Committee reports. Policy Committee?
We have been meeting a ton. Obviously, getting through all of those. We'll keep at it until we get them all done. 500s are very important, so we need to get that section done next.
And again, a special acknowledgement to Deb Catterlick for her help. Curriculum Committee? Anything for the cause?
They have not met.
Facility? Security system update?
Uh, I'd say, when it comes to the door access system, all installations are complete at this point and functioning. A few programming issues we have to deal with at this point, but otherwise functional, and about 75 percent with the camera systems. I would expect even by the end of the week to have that complete. So, we're getting pretty close to being complete and fully operational. Servers are online with the new system as of last Friday, with the existing cameras that we already had, and what's been installed to this point.
Okay, question? Okay, Supes Report?
I actually do have a report. The principals want to know which month are we do, or which board meeting are you doing reports at? Second meeting?
That's your report?
Or first report? No, because we do need to know. None of us really know. I, I always thought it was second board meeting?
I just read what's in front of me.
Okay, so I just need to make sure, okay.
Whatever Lori decides.
I do have a report. I've been at about a million meetings, it feels like, with AAC, Goodview County Ed District, Region 1, Housing Initiative, and the Mesa Committees that I'm on. Number two, a special thanks to Deb, I've already said that. We had a great finance meeting, I thought. I'm gonna put it down as one of our retreat top items. I know Kurt and Bob are a part of that committee. I thought we got through some really good things, and kind of a good projection of where the district is going. Again, we're doing some pretty great things on the, not a whole lot of money that we have. Pretty proud of what we've done. World's Best Workforce, there's a component to this. It's about up to 162 pages. I've been, my fingers are about ready to fall off typing it all up, but there are a few things that the school boards must do. One, we must involve the community during the plan and development, and we're covered with that because of our curriculum committee. Number two, I need to find some members of the community that represent some diversity in our community. So, if anyone in the audience, if you feel that you can bring some...
Norwegian?
Norwegian would be fine. I could use some diversity to come in and look at the plan before we give it to the board. So, if you, you genuinely know of somebody that would be interested in doing that, I could use those. The school board is also, must make recommendations towards academic standards, and we are covered on that through our curriculum committee as well. Thank you to Kurt and Brenda for being on that committee. And then the final step is the district leaders, which will be myself and the principals. We'll post this annual report, and then we will submit a summary to you. You will be approving this at the last meeting of this month. I also met with the City Commissioner, Ron Johnson, to discuss some possible collaboration. I know that there's some money savings there. We just need to find it. We talked about joint purchasing power, and we found some options that we're going to start doing some of our ordering together. We did discuss some idea of maybe sharing custodial staff, or somehow using staff that you may have in the summer, using the same people, so we're not both paying those. They've got a full-time someone at the city that they just don't need right now, so we thought that would be an option. We are gonna collaborate on our ordering of paper. We order it by the semi-load, because it's just cheaper, and then we house it for two years. They don't have a place to house it, but could pay us to house their paper and buy it jointly with us, again, saving money for us. We looked at phone service savings. We, there really isn't anything there. And one of the items that came from our meeting is, don't kill me for another meeting, but we would really love to have a joint city council and school board meeting. We think that it would just show that he and I are working so close together, and the city, and Mayo, and the school are really doing some great things for this town, and I think it would just be one more example of us coming together. Doesn't have to be a long meeting, doesn't have to be at their city council meeting or your board meeting, but just a, just an opportunity to talk about what he and I are doing collaboratively. Maybe invite Mayo. Again, they're a big piece of that. Just an idea. We thought, other, some other schools and cities do it, and we just thought that maybe it would be something you'd be interested in. But, overall, we have found some ways to save money. On snow days, they are gonna make a plow through our drag, or, and that sounds silly, but to get that initial, you know, drive-through, at least I can get to the school and do the school reach things, and some of those other things that need to be done on snow days and things like that. So, they've been just great to work with. I know they, they really like Dave, and it sounds like they're getting along with you too, so it's good. You haven't made anyone mad at the city. It's really nice of you.
Not yet.
So, just something to think about, but that's my report.
Thank you. Head of Operations and Maintenance, do you have anything for us?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention as we come into the winter months here, that we are gonna honor the last year of the contract of the, the contractor we used last year. This will be the last year. I, you know, some people thought that maybe we were gonna be bidding that out, but we are gonna honor the last year of that contract, you know, in addition to the equipment that we did purchase already this year. So, it's something that we'll be looking at next year, but we will be using the same contractor for this year, and see how it goes.
And I don't care when we have reports, if you want to make it the first meeting or second.
Oh, I'll do that. Thanks.
Principals Reports?
They're at conferences.
We don't have here. CE and Activities?
Yeah, sure. I'll start with Activities. I believe they're not wrapping up the fall seasons already. Soccer wrapped up their second season last week. Tennis doubles team of Matty Adell and Taylor Bennett compete tomorrow. If they win two matches, they'll go to the state tournament. Cross-country volleyball and football wrap up their regular seasons this week, and section play starts next week. 267 total registrations this fall, up from 234 last year. So, good to see more kids out. Next year, we'll start district football play. I'm sure you've heard a lot about this. We've been placing the Southeast District, which I think I've mentioned before. I am on the Southeast Football District Committee, and we've split the division, split into two divisions of eight. Our opponents are the exact same, except our crossover game, we'll play Zambroda-Mazepa, just because of geography. We'll play Zambroda-Mazepa instead of St. Charles for two years, and then we'll look at it. Some teams may move out, you know, our, our district could look different in two years, but right now, it's, our schedule will be the exact same, other than Week 1, we'll play Zambroda-Mazepa. Another big change for next year is that the first game, the first game of the year will actually be after just two weeks of practice. Typically, it's after three. That's because of TCF Bank Stadium, playing the state tournament outside, and a scheduling conflict. So, like I said, usually there's two weeks of conditioning, and then you have your first game week. So, it's now, it's gonna be a week of practice, a game week, and when you usually play that Saturday scrimmage, you play a game. So, the first game's gonna be on a Saturday next year, because you have to have those two full weeks of conditioning, is what they call it. Dance team has started choreography for the upcoming season. They start practicing next Monday. They're also in the midst of planning their Disney trip, which we know about. I've asked them to have their itinerary up, ready for approval by the next board meeting, so be ready for that. Boys basketball is starting on the 10th of November, and then the rest of the winter sports on the 17th. We'll host a signup meeting on the 3rd of November. Community Ed, we've got 93 students registered in our three- and four-year-old preschool classes. Classes are going really well. Our teachers do a great job. This year, we changed our format to open up as many spaces as possible. We kind of took back a little bit of flexibility for parents, but we just opened more spots, and it's really worked out well for us. Our average, average class size is under 15, which is about perfect for preschool, so really happy to throw that at. We are not holding conferences right now with the rest of the school. We'll do ours in November and March, just so there's a little bit less traffic and more data to work with, because these kids only come two or three days a week usually. Early childhood screening this year, there's a new requirement saying that each student has, or every kid needs to be screened within a certain amount of time of starting school. So, usually, we only have two a year. We've already had two this year, and we'll have four for the whole year. Kayla Potts is our screening coordinator. She's taken on a lot of extra work, adding those screening dates this year, and our whole preschool staff is involved in that too. Lastly, Shepherd Center is holding their annual health fair this Friday. Usually, it's on a Thursday, but it's this Friday here in the high school, so about it.
Always busy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Student Reports. Ashley and Matt, do you have anything?
Yes. Um, I think the biggest thing that's happened, students, was homecoming, which was two weeks ago. The students had dress-up days with the talent show and various pep fest, and then the football game, which was on Friday night. Tonight, most of you know, is conferences. Thursday and Friday is MEA break for us, so there is no school. Sports-wise, volleyball plays tomorrow versus Triton at home. Football plays this Wednesday against Lake City at home, and again, the boys and girls soccer both ended their season last Tuesday in the first round of sections.
With a great season.
Okay, thank you. And again, welcome, Matt. Good to see you, Ashley. Upcoming meetings, our regular board meeting will be October 27th, and among the items, you see the list down there. If you have anything more to add to, contact Beth or Lori, and we'll see if we can get it on the next agenda. Public forum. This sometime in the future, we'll have first instead of last. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to speak to for the cause? You certainly have an opportunity.
Okay, good question. We were talking funding for the soccer team and other sports. Is there, if a company or somebody would want to donate something, how do they do that? Do they donate to the school, the soccer club, or how does that go?
Our auditors have a very clear, you know, way that that has to happen. It can be directed to a specific program, but that would go through that, and then that would be put into Jake's budgets accordingly.
Just, I want to thank you guys for approving soccer. I'm very new to it. I started like in August, so I'm one of the newest around. But I have to say, the team, I don't know if any of you made it to a varsity game, but the boys, they come across the field and congratulate the parents and the sponsors coming to watch the game. I think that's fantastic, and the camaraderie that those boys showed out there. I've never seen it in any sport at Cannon Falls, so I mean, again, the life lessons that are learned in sports, you can't say anymore. I mean, it's very good, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't want to jump in front of anyone, but go ahead. Well, I just want to say that I came here tonight not knowing for sure if I was going to speak before the vote or after and so forth, and I was pondering what I was, how I was gonna feel, or what I was gonna say. If you did vote and went the other way, it would have changed everything and how to proceed that. So, I applaud your thinking. I really think that would be a process improvement, to hear from people. Absent that, you're left only hearing from people that maybe know you, or pursue you some other way, and then it's a one-on-one conversation rather than in the air of public and so forth. So, I think that's a great idea. Thanks for considering that too. My name is Mark Rosland. I've got a couple students left in school. My son is a senior this year. Both of them played soccer both last year and this year. Gina's a sophomore, so she's got a couple years left now. So, I came with, I'm gonna put away my 40-slide PowerPoint now, just to say thank you to all of you. You have been very supportive, and I, and I really thank you for that. I also want to thank the coaches, and I don't know, Josh is here, who knows? I don't, I think we lost a few of the other ones, but they've done a great job, and as you know, unpaid, but the time and dedication that they showed for a couple years here, and they just did a terrific job. To the point about the camaraderie and so forth, maybe there's something about kicking a round ball on a grassy field that brings out the best in kids, but I totally agree, and I think we've tried, we've had conversations among the parents many times, that this group of kids, both boys and girls, and it also is a reflection of the coaching, I have to say, too, the respect and so forth that they bring to the game. But it's just a great group of kids, and it's fun to watch that. And then, I just want to say, congratulations to the kids. Some of you took, you know, what if this program, and you spent your small year, have done something else real quick here, but there's the, with the fireplace, there's some wood, as soon as you start, I think there's some of them that got a commitment hanging off, maybe the Randolph, they're all ready and committing to this, this sport next year, not just a positive thing to it, so. Very happy, and we know that, as a parent, a lot of work to do, right? Even your brothers would be okay. You know, I'm, I'm very optimistic. Thank you.
Any other sports, please? Do athletes, right? That's what you meant, Esther.
Exactly. Especially the competition is not participate in sports.
Not recruiting sports, so we should continue that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Cole Rosland. Say some thank yous as well. Seen these past couple years, play soccer competitively, so with the, it's been nice jersey, it's been nice. Shout out to Dr. is here. Been working behind the scenes, she's of this whole movement. It's what she'll, and I know Beth Gees, and it's crunching numbers. Us fans, it's been really nice along chairs, and just always the funnest sport. Thank you, it means a lot. I don't know, if they have any representatives, they've been doing a lot, just maintenance, field actions, they've set up a couple times. You guys, thank you. Thank you for...
I'll say something too. Something about soccer, you know, couch balls. Also, I don't think I'm much of a... Mom will also, uh, soccer and go away, so you know, didn't, was like, you know, let's try soccer. I really liked it. Takes a team, and in most sports here, winning games, when soccer, you really needed to do a lot. I mean, you put me out there, it's cool what's going on, so I mean, learn a lot from, for accepting it, and, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My doctor.
The county.
I just want to, um, and very fun to watch. Put a lot of time in. It takes a lot to build a program, and goalie gloves, and goalie gloves you need, and soccer balls do you need, and how many. So, I just put a lot into it, to all of you guys. It was awesome. We actually have two last year that are, so opportunity, and we're hoping that year, that will check, because we, which is our teams have gotten teams about their support, and how they never give up. Teams, which the team did their job. Our, our kids never get, all the coaches said is our crowd out there, and one coach even, he wished his team handles had. So, we have great kids.
Okay, anyone else like to speak?
Please don't ever put Val in charge.
Going up, so, thanks, Val.
Please don't put her in charge of it.
You should be related, right, Jerry? Exactly. The odds to get crowds and all that occurs, just when there's, very seldom when it's a lot. But, I want you to remember upcoming, that we're gonna have to deal with it, and in addition to that legislative year, get any funding increase, we will be in dire, if that, the nasty R-word referendum, that's just solid, and, you know, years before, but they have come several times and said, do a great job on a shoestring. And that's, that's kind of been the, going back to the years, and so, I'm fighting that, but there comes a community that say, we just can't. Maybe cynics, their education has psyched, and certainly have caught, either way, is the most board ever come across. He said that, yeah, this evening, we're something that's appreciated, I guess, because sometimes folks, so. Can I, one more thing?
If I'm the thing right then, refer, we need to put Val in charge for next year, huh? Did we not just come to that?
No, Pat, I was gonna...
I don't know.
All charge of the referendum, say that.
I hope we could bushwhack, just kind of throw. Um, I would look for... I'll make a motion by Jerry. Kurt, for, all in favor say aye. That is Carrie.